Okay.
I'd like to call the common council, meeting no order. Can we stand for a roll call? I mean, can you do roll call? Yeah, I'm reading from what you should have put pledge first.
Eric Kennedy is absent. Alderman Bukovich?
Here.
Alderman Doherty?
Here.
Alderman Galhard? Alderman Wheezy?
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling?
Here.
Alderman Shaw is absent.
Okay, Alderman Doherty, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Okay, two, public comment. Glendale resident, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda and are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? I don't see anybody on this Zoom. Anybody like to? Third time, would anyone like to speak? I think it's the hand on the... Okay, we will go to the next item. Yeah, it's not the hand that raises.
Oh, no.
Okay, we're gonna go through third item, consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Moved by Alderman Wheezy, second by Alderman Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For new business, for a review and approve of updates to the employee personnel handbook, bereavement leave and paid time off. Rachel?
Before you are two updates to the personal handbook, we do review the handbook on the annual basis. This one is paid time off and the bereavement leave. I'm gonna do bereavement leave first because it's easier. Bereavement leave, we are simply adding stepparents to the list of eligible people with today's blended families. It made a lot of sense to add that. It was a request from the police department staff and it just made sense to present. The second item is paid time off. Currently, the city of Glendale has sick banks and vacation banks and they're very specific in what they can be utilized for. Paid time off, you have a president, Megan, paid time off in lieu of the sick and vacation banks gives an employee more flexibility in being able to monitor and manage their time for those who do not utilize a lot of sick time. This gives them the ability to take additional time off during the year, over the course of the years, without being penalized for taking that time or for capping it if they don't want to. So, right now with the sick leave bank, after so many years, you hit a maximum if you don't use your sick leave and then you lose it. Or it also encourages people at the time of hitting the max to come up with illness that may not be enough to keep them home if they hadn't hit that max. Along with that, it does keep the sick leave option for those who have accrued that high balance and anticipated a payout. It does keep that intact, allowing the employee to choose to either place it in a medical leave bank for future use if they think something is coming up, whether it's birth of a child, some medical procedure they're anticipating, or they can leave it in a third bank, which would be for the payout, which is currently what they're eligible for. That third bank is only for current employees. New employees would not be allotted that third bank. Finally, an added request would be there were four employees that were hired at various times to before we had the option of the administrator being able to give them additional time off at the time of hire and two that should have been given additional time off had we understood the skill set and there had been a request. I would like at this time if the PTO is approved to bump them up to the next level of vacation allotment starting in January of 2022. So, that would be part of my request as well.
Alderman Doherty has a question.
On the long run, as far as cost to the city, how do you view this versus the current plan?
Okay, for this, in the long term, it will eventually phase out any payouts. So, financially, as far as any post-employment benefits, it would eliminate them for future employees.
Rachel, the numbers under the PTO calculation don't include legal holidays, is that right?
That is correct. So, in addition to the PTO, there are 11 holidays that are approved by the council.
So, someone right after one year would be looking at 34 days off a year, is that right? With legal holidays?
That, with 34, they, it would be more than one year before they accrued that. They would only accrue 12 days in the first year, but if they didn't use any in the first few years, they could hold on to them for the max of 34. So, it would take them some time to get up to that maximum accrual limit, but they would only be earning them. So, the first year, they earn approximately 12 days, 96 hours. Years one through five, they earn 18 days, but they don't have to use them all. They're on a constant roll. So, if they're hired and they know in two years they want to take a two-week vacation overseas, they're able to plan for that and increase and not take as much time and not draw down on it if necessary.
Have to be, and someone say up 100 days, it's a little awkward to run.
They still have to be approved and the policy requires that they take a 40-hour week annually.
If the, for whatever reason, the employee cannot take that 40 hours per year, is that a use it or lose it scenario?
No, they will be, if they don't choose an assigned time, we would have to. It's a requirement to take 40 hours.
Pfizer would?
Would tell them, you need to take vacation. It's extremely important to take time off.
Okay, so then they come in and say, yep, you're off next week.
If, at some point, if they're going to not choose it, then we would have to make that determination. It would be an extreme choice. I don't know of anyone who doesn't want to take time off. Well, Ricky, yeah.
So, the, kind of piggybacking on that, so the maximum accrual limit, so if they didn't take their time and they didn't have the ability to put it into their FMLA bank, it would still basically still expire?
If it expires, if they get up to the accrual max and then they're still accruing more, it won't, it will automatically dump into the family medical leave bank until it is maxed out. Right.
Right, and then second question, I don't know if this was, I know a lot of this was kind of compared to what they had prior, but how does this compare to the other communities in the, I guess, government sector?
Yeah, it's extremely comparable. It's patterned after the first, so the first community that I'm aware of in southeastern Wisconsin that did it was actually Village of Grafton. Bayside was shortly thereafter, probably by about a year, and they've all followed suit and have very similar banks. The only thing that they don't have that this does have is we've allocated proportionally for the police supervisors who work an eight-and-a-half-hour day versus other employees that work an eight-hour day. So, we did make that differential that other communities don't have.
Thank you. It looks very well thought through and it also echoes a lot that I see in the general, I would say, non-government sectors.
The state employee vacation schedule, it maxes out at 216 hours, which is considerably less than what we're offering here. So, at the state level, at 25 years, you're looking at 216 vacation hours versus 264 here. So, this is a lot of time off. I guess, you know, my trouble with this is the idea is that it's public service and, you know, you're supposed to be here available for this, you know, for the public if you're off for two months of the year. It seems a little inconsistent with the idea of public service. So, that's the trouble I have with it.
Can I ask, is the 216 hours for vacation and sick, or is it just vacation time?
I believe that it's just vacation time.
So, this would include sick leave as well? So, they, if someone has sick time that they need to use, that those days are included? Or they could be, they can earn and have time allocated into a family medical leave bank, which would be held off for an event that could happen at a future date such as birth of a child?
I didn't calculate, I think even with sick time calculations, this would still be more than what the state does, which has been in effect for many years, but anyway.
Right, the days, the time that we're giving that is accrued annually is less than what they're accruing now.
Vote all in. Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries by a vote of four to one.
So, she gets to vote.
Okay, next item. Application for a license filed by the.
The Little League traditionally has had picnic licenses in the past. As you're aware, a council had given permission to staff to go ahead and issue special picnic licenses when they were issued on a regular basis. This has been a couple of years with new people in charge and the sale and distribution of alcoholic beverages on a city of Glendale property. So, though it's Little League, it's still City of Glendale property and it has been some time since the last approval. We just wanted to reiterate that this is something that happens and ask for your approval at this time.
Temporary. The temporary picnic license filed by the Glendale Little League.
So, move.
Moved by Alderman Doherty.
Second.
Second by Alderman Galhard. Any discussion? Alderman Del?
Ever been any issues, you know, problem maker? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business, review and approve of lease agreement with the Glendale Little League.
First and foremost, on the memo, it says to approve a stormwater management plan. That is not correct. As you may know, I do type over old memos once in a while. So, the motion that we'll be asking for is to approve the lease agreement as presented. The Glendale Little League has had an ongoing lease with the city of Glendale. They're usually for about nine or 10 years. The last one did expire in 2019, was a small oversight. And when they came to us asking about renovations and how that process would work, we did indicate that it'd probably be best to renew the lease first and then they may come to us at a future time with some renovation updates that they'd like to do. The lease does indicate that any renovations would need to come to the council. You should have a firm understanding of what's happening at that property. So, for right now, the recommendation is to approve a lease, ending it on 2030, making it a consistent timeframe that is easy to remember when to renew. And then, in the future, we hope to see some presentation from the Little League.
Agreement with the Little League?
And the leases for a dollar a year, okay.
Fair 10 is in the budget, I assume.
Yes.
Dollar or dollar?
It's a dollar a year.
Dollar a year.
I'll see if I can get back pay for the lease year we missed.
Rachel took over the negotiations for him. Oh, jeez.
Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Moved by Alderman Wheezy.
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty. Any more discussion? All in favor, please. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're at 4D, review and approve of Wisconsin Department of Transportation Traffic Migration Grant Agreement for State Project ID 1229-04-. Do I have to really read all that? Implementation of emergency vehicle preempt at the West Silver Spring Drive and North Milwaukee River Parkway.
So, as indicated in the memo from Public Works Director, the money provided in the agreement allows for design, equipment purchase and implementation of emergency vehicle preemption at no cost to the city. This is a similar agreement that we've had for Public Works. What this does is they're, they can press a button, get through the lights, everybody's happy. Fire and police have both looked at this and thought this was a benefit. So, we do recommend approval.
Motion? Alderman Doherty?
Also second.
Second, Alderman Galhard. Any discussion? Alderman Wheezy?
Thank you. Further on in the page, you're talking about other projects on Port World, Silver Spring. There's five other bullet points. Are those also incorporated into this or?
I don't believe it's incorporated into it. It is just that for the one intersection is the $10,000. The rest of the intersections are being requested, but I don't know that they've made any determination. Oh, with the other, the other ones are part of?
Other five.
Are already being done.
Are already being handled by DOT.
Okay.
Good deal. Thank you.
For vote all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. For E, pavement rehab night work on North Port Washington from, oh no, I can't see this anymore. Daphne Road with Good Hope Road at part of the I-43 work zone prep project.
So, as a part of the I-43 project, there's work being done on North Port Washington Road. The work that needs to be done from North Daphne to Good Hope does involve some concrete crushing, some other work that could be loud. So, the state does have the ability to work overnight. They indicated that the loudest portions of the work would be done prior to 10:00 PM. The alternative is to disrupt traffic during the day and cause backup some Port Washington Road. We are bringing this to the council for knowledge that as of right now, the state is desiring and plans on doing overnight work, however being that it is so close to residential area. If there was something the council wanted to do to prohibit that, I believe you could ask them to do the work during the day. However, again, that could cause traffic backup some Port Washington Road during the entire time that they need to do the work.
Buddy?
Says it's three or week period, so.
Correct, correct. And I, yeah, it's not that there'll be concrete crushing all five days. They would stop things like that by 10 o'clock and go toward the quieter. They try to work with them. They think this is actually the better option than backing up traffic during the day and causing those challenges.
Thank you. Looking at the, coming out of a one-lane road, northbound and southbound, if they limited to, you know, daytime work, looking at the map here, it doesn't appear that there'd be a whole lot that would be, you know, you'd have one lane in each direction.
But they're trying, right, possibly, depending on how they work it. You're not in the microphone.
It would stop the mic, or they would stop the traffic like two, three minutes worth of the traffic going one way and then they would flip it and have that stuff that was going the opposite way stop. This is, for me, this is like a, it's a catch-22, especially because not so much, it doesn't affect my district too much, but what happens is because Hampton and those Hampton ramps are closed, Silver Spring on that area gets super tied up and they're all going north. So, I'm just gonna, I personally am gonna defer to Alderman Galhard on this one because it does affect us, but, and it's bad as it is, but I don't know how I would feel if somebody was working in front of my house.
Am I gonna get phone calls? Yes, that's.
Any which direction, yeah.
Yeah, and you're gonna get, either you're gonna get the people ticked off because they can't get home because it's so crowded or it's night, but I don't know if sleep's more important than getting home, you know?
Well, three and four weeks is assuming they get to do it that way. If they don't do it that way, I believe it won't be done in three or four weeks. That's downside. It's all, you know, you have a minor little weather factor that comes in, of course. You've been very lucky so far.
The other thing is the wind direction. I mean, if we're, you know, lucky enough to have the wind coming off the lake going to the east, maybe, you know, I don't get too many complaints, but.
I think Rachel is very smart in making the council make this decision so we can all take it, all six of us.
I think that we go ahead and, you know, defer to the DOT at this point in time and if there's a problem, I will certainly intercede and I've interacted with Steve Hoff on a number of occasions. So, I wouldn't have any problem saying, Steve, you know, let's switch.
Very reasonable.
Is this decision reversible? So, we find out we're getting it?
No, they're gonna need to move forward and they're neither gonna need to move forward with their plan during the day or their plan at night, but trying to change it in the midst would be extremely challenging.
I think it's great we have these maps because when I look at the maps, a lot of this is in front of commercial and other types of buildings like that. There is a patch that I do see where it looks like there's maybe the homes right off of Sugar Lane, I think that is. So, it's unfortunate, but I think for the most part, the work is not going to be as impacting residential, at least how I'm looking at it.
So, I'd just like to remind you that the Green Tree Road Bridge was not right next to Ironwood, but that neighborhood hurt it.
Well, that's.
Just that, that is what came to mind first and foremost when they said night work was Ironwood Lane.
Yeah, there's a, I do understand piling in a new bridge, but this looks like it's, you know, some, some concrete will be removed. So, it won't be pleasant. But again, just looking in general, I don't know what the other options are. It looks like there's really no good approach here. Follow-up question, is there anything planned? I know they're doing other diversions along Green Bay Road. Is there any plans in the future for something like that?
I don't have any information on that and if I do, I can bring it to the council at a future date, but since it's not agenda, we really can't talk about it.
Thank you. Just, I know that's a.
Right.
More residential.
Alderman Doherty?
There are options, I mean, 10 at night's getting a little later. I guess that's the only thing I was thinking, do we say nine?
But that's our zone.
That may make it impossible for them to get any damn thing done.
But that's. Our allowable work time is until 10:00 PM, so.
That's a request.
Right.
Yeah, they're keeping with our normal times.
The thing is, September and October, I mean, if it's colder weather, obviously people will have their, you know, windows closed and stuff. That would be helpful. But, you know, we don't know what the weather's gonna be like.
I'm deferring to.
I say go ahead and do the nighttime work and, you know, hopefully it gets done.
If we're not looking for a change to what DOT is planning, we do not need to make any motions. They will just continue on their path.
This is, by the way, this is just simply parts of the pavement that have degraded. They're removing those to enhance, you know, make everything nice and solid.
That they were tearing it all down.
Daphne, Daphne North is just reconstruction of the four lanes. Daphne South to Bender is construction of additional lanes on each side.
The other discussion? Okay, we are at item five, commission committee and board reports. Alderman Doherty?
I'll report at this time.
Alderman Galhard?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Wheezy?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Schmelzling?
Nothing this evening.
Oh, I do have, just wanna give you an update. We have, I went to the League of Municipalities Board meeting Wednesday, Thursday and parts of Friday, really trying to push huge amounts of, of shared services. That's their biggest push to see if we can get more shared services. Looks like the leader is not willing to talk until after the elections, but they're gonna try some other stuff and actually try to do a campaign so citizens actually know what they're getting and knowing that, you know what, you might save a couple of dollars on this, but what your city is putting in and what your city or village is getting are two different things. The other, the other big shift is also the equity work, thinking about how they're doing equity and how they are bringing it across the state, not just in race, but in every area to make sure that there is an equal opportunity for all of the citizens that live in Wisconsin. And I think that's it. If you are going to the October convention, it's in October, you probably need to tell, what's her?
Kayla.
Kayla, to reserve your rooms. I think that's it for me. Okay, item six, the common council will convene in closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.81G, conferring with legal counsel of the governmental body who is oral and written advice concerning a strategy to adopt by the body with respect to, with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Makler, Makler versus Glendale and Tadis bomb claim. Do I have to read the rest of this? Please call for a motion for closed session. Thank you.
A vote.
There, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session. Rachel, do you know if there is anything that we need to discuss after?
No, nothing is most likely coming, nothing will be coming out of a closed session.
Okay. Oh, chief, he should always stay. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Wheezy, second by Alderman Doherty, all in favor? Aye. Motion pass, we adjourned.
Make the motion, stand up and start walking.
Actually, you know what, I don't know why people keep.